I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now call the City Council Regime Meeting in City Hall, Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street, on the second floor of Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 7:12 PM, to order. If the clerk would be so kind as to take roll.
Here.
Here.
Here. Daniel Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Bouganam?
Present. First, we have the approval of minutes, May 27, 2025, the special meeting minutes, as well as the May 27, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Acclamation. All right. Very good. No correspondence. All right. Then, first, we have our, under public hearings today, we have an ordinance authorizing a commercial operating agreement and lease with Loves Flying Flight Training LLC. I'm going to open this public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on and only this particular ordinance, they may do so now.
Okay, this one and the next one. I had questions because rental price was so different, 13 cents per square foot versus 57, or some such. I wondered why there was such a disparity in numbers. And so I called John Vrabel, and he told me why. And I hear by support both resolutions, both the things you have on your agenda there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Three, two, one. All right. And now I'm going to open an ordinance authorizing commercial operating agreement and lease with RSA Flight School at public hearing. Bring one wishing to speak on this, and only this may do so now. Three, two, and closed. All right. Unfinished business, boards and commissions, which we are, as if I recall correctly, there are no boards to appoint for this evening. Okay? Next, we have the public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution, allowing four members to speak, in which council will not respond. And I'm going to open this public portion now. And the first person we have on our list is our Human Rights Commission Chair, Ms. Annie Groh-Niork.
This time I did not knock on my water. The Human Rights Commission has more openings, and we desperately need people to sign up to surround the commission. Hopefully, people who are dedicated to human rights and not looking for something to pretty up their resume, because it takes a lot of work. And attending meetings is always important as well. So, anybody who's interested, it's not on City Council, because you're not allowed. Please find the application online. It is worthwhile, and there's a lot of work to be done. So, we are working on, when I said we, I'm working on the annual report to be done by June 30th, because I heard there's a deadline for these things. And there are many documents that need to be generated in the near future. We'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? And I will close the public portion now. All right. We have no special committee reports. We have the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the first thing we have, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a commercial operating agreement and lease with Loves Flying Flight Training LLC, first read May 20, 2025. Additionally, we have a consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a commercial operating agreement and lease with RSA Flight School. First reading was May 20, 2025. Third, we have a consideration of approval of the first reading of the ordinance designating the safe surrender sites. And then we have the consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance mowing a portion of Anderson Avenue from Dogwood to the end. Is anybody wishing to bring any of this off?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Say, clerk.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganam?
Yes, Consent 7-0. Next, we are on to our new business. The first we have is the consideration of approval, which is the first reading of an ordinance proposing to remove certain parcels from the development district designed, designated, I'm sorry, City of Morgantown redevelopment district number three, the TIF district, thereby amending the boundaries of the TIF district, extend the TIF district termination date by 15 years beyond its current termination date, and permit issuance of additional tax increment revenue bonds or other obligations to fund additional phases of development with the, within the amended project plan for the TIF district, all as further described in the tax increment financing application dated April 7, 2025. For this item, I'm guessing, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance that would put into effect the proposed amendment to the city's TIF district number three, the Sunnyside District. Generally, the changes made are to remove four parcels of property and then plan to extend the term of the district 15 years and request that the Department of Economic Development increase the bonding capacity for the district. These are all requests made by the district developer, Campus Neighborhoods Revitalization Corporation, and intended to support future planned redevelopment in the district. This application was the subject of the public hearing that council recently held and the application that the City Council authorized submitting to the Department of Economic Development. The department approved that application. The letter was provided to council, and so this ordinance is the formal step of the city that will put into effect those proposed amendments. Carrie Cecil with Frost Ground Todd has represented the city in preparation of the application and proposed amendments to the district, and she is also available to answer any more detailed questions about the ordinance.
Thank you. Carrie, thank you for coming. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Not from the last briefing.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. No discussion, ma'am?
Good to keep these districts going. Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganam?
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval, the first reading of an ordinance amending Article 1751, which is entitled Housing Code. And Ms. Mazurlo, Assistant City Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, included in your packet is a revision to Article 1751 for housing code. This was presented, your committed the whole, by Chief Building Official Jorgantus. It proposes a number of amendments to the housing code, primarily to clarify some definitions. And it adds or clarifies having owner or property point of contact more locally, so when we are trying to address issues that may be occurring at a property, that we have someone that we can get in touch with a little bit more promptly to address those. So, if there's any specific questions about the ordinance in front of you, I'd be happy to answer this.
All right. It would be helpful to be able to contact somebody?
Yes. It's very difficult. We've had people where the property is owned by someone across the country, and you are trying to either issue a warrant or get them to address so much needed property maintenance, and it becomes increasingly difficult to get ahold of them. So, that's one of the things taken up in this proposed changes to the ordinance, is to have, require somebody that can respond more quickly.
All right. Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Very good.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganam?
Yes, passes 7-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the city charter to move elections to the mayor, to the May primary date. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance proposes an amendment to the city's charter to bring it into compliance with the 2025 legislation, Senate Bill 50, which requires all municipal elections statewide to be held concurrently with either the statewide May primary election or the statewide November general election. This change would put Morgantown in a place where it would hold those elections on the May primary date beginning in 2030. It would do that by having the next two terms of council be elected for three-year terms instead of the current four-year terms, and then returning to the current four-year schedule with the 2030 election. This is a proposed amendment to the charter, because that's where Morgantown's current election date resides, and so this is the first reading of the ordinance presented at the Committee of the Whole. There is a 30-day notice of a public hearing requirement, and the second reading of the ordinance, if council moves it forward tonight, will be held on July 15.
The new council.
That's right.
Move to approve?
Second.
No discussion? All right.
Bill Kueke?
Reluctantly, yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Same as Kueke, yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Emphatically, yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bouganam?
Yes. Passes 7-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the business licensing and business and operation tax provisions to comply with updates to state law, and based on the word "law." Going to guess, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another ordinance addressing state law legislative changes this past session. House Bill 2451 makes some changes to the business and occupation tax provisions and the business licensing options for municipalities, in particular by allowing an exemption from business licensing for any person who operates their business as either a sole proprietor or an independent contractor, who does not have a physical location within the city, and who earns less than $2,500 in total revenue in a year. And it creates an exemption from the business and occupation tax whereby any business that has total revenue lower than $2,500 for the entire year is not subject to the business and occupation tax. So, this ordinance puts those into place for Morgantown. As I noted last time, we received help from the West Virginia Municipal League and their council. They tracked this legislation and provided reference materials to the Municipal Attorneys Association to try to make sure that the legislation and municipal ordinances implementing it were coordinated and it were coordinated and correct the appropriate terminology within the existing business and occupation tax code, so I certainly appreciate that help. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to entertain those. This is brought to you so it can be adopted in June and become effective as of July 1st the next fiscal year. The legislation does not technically become effective until July 11, but it is most convenient for everybody to have these changes made on a fiscal year basis. So if possible, it would be preferred if council is able to pass this in June.
I'm curious, does this alleviate the necessity for a business license?
For certain operators, they will no longer, the city can no longer require them to have a business license. It's probably a pretty limited class of businesses because it only applies to sole proprietors, that's just one person operating without a corporate entity, or independent contractors, as people who are receiving a 1099 from some other entity for their payment. They don't have a physical location here, and they have pretty limited revenue on an annual basis.
No physical location in Morgantown?
That's right.
The city property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do they have to meet both, under $2,500 and no physical location?
They must meet all three elements, so they have to be one of those types of businesses, either a sole proprietor or an independent contractor, and have no physical location and have revenue lower than $2,500.
Uber drivers?
Sure.
Etsy?
Mobile vendors and some contractors that don't do a whole lot of business here.
I have a question. So if you meet those three intending not to go over the $2,500 limit, if unexpectedly you have a very good sales year and you hit $2,500 at that point, can you go back and meet all of the, like, get your business license at that point?
Yeah, it's a great question. What we did with the ordinance is we based the exemption on the past calendar year of the operator, so if you're coming up on our licensing cycle at the end of June 2025, you have to report and maybe document to the finance department, if they ask for that, that in calendar year 2024, you had annual revenue less than $2,500, and then that you meet those other two elements.
So if in 2025, you don't get a business license, you're not paying taxes, but you end up $5,000, in 2026, you need to get your license?
You'll need to get a license that next year because you were over that threshold. The business and occupation tax exemption is treated differently, though, because you can find out during the fiscal year how much money you made. There is an exemption that applies to anybody who during that fiscal year has less than $2,500 in total revenue, but if they exceed that threshold, then all they have to do is pay the tax due at that point.
Okay.
I have a question. Downtown Morgantown market, you always have to have a business license, is that right? If I remember correctly?
I think there are some vendors who may be exempt as agricultural producers, but in general, anybody who conducts business in the city must have a business license from the city.
So they will no longer need them to be participants in that?
They may qualify. It probably depend on, it will depend on their business structure first, and then also the total revenue they derive from their operations.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if them being under an awning would qualify as a...
It's, I'm sorry, it's a permanent physical location, so just because you, you know, you come with a truck and some goods, you would not have a fixed location in the city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Bill Kueke?
With no great enthusiasm, yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
I don't have an adjective, so I'm just going to say yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Emphatically, yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. All right, next we have the approval, consideration of approval of a resolution designating certain individuals as authorized agents in the City of Morgantown for the purpose of transacting funds with banking and financial institutions.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So included for you tonight, part of the due diligence within our finance department and with our banking institutions, we have to have council designate our authorized signers that essentially allows us to sign checks and conduct business for city purposes. As we anticipate the transition from our acting city manager Damian Davis to our incoming city manager Jamie Miller, we have updated the signatories to reflect those individuals. So included on that is Jamie Miller, city manager, Jonathan Ferguson, finance director, myself, assistant city manager Denise Stefaniisi, who's our assistant director of finance, and Melissa Wiles through Bow Park, and that just again kind of helps with transacting some of those. So this gives that list the ability to endorse checks, drafts, notes, and other items payable to the city for deposit or collection.
Thank you. Pretty straightforward.
Move to approve.
Second.
No discussion.
It's an administrative matter. Here we go. Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of resolution amending the 2425 budget revision Number Seven for the Morgantown General Fund. And Mr. Ferguson, welcome.
Thank you. Best part of the night. Absolutely. Mayor, City Council, thank you. John Ferguson, city finance director, I have the privilege of presenting to you the General Funds Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Resolution Number Seven. Originally Number Seven and Number Eight, we smushed them together, so now we just had the one. On the very first one, well, first off, everyone have their notes. Did you guys get those? Perfect, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. The very first one that we're going to talk about is the budget revision for the IT department. Now, this one here, like a couple others that we had previously, what we're doing is that we're cleaning up prior year issues. Let's just call them issues. Not really that big a deal. What ended up happening was because there was a transition period with the former finance director, the former assistant finance director, and the council payable clerk, we had some bills that didn't get paid by the end of the last fiscal year, and we had to address those in this fiscal year. This happens to be one of those. So because we are on the cash basis of accounting, what ended up happening last year because they did not spend those funds, that was rolled into the General Fund Resolution Number One, which then rolled it into contingency. All we're doing with this is that we are rolling that back out of contingency, and that way, because we paid last year's invoice in August, we now want to make sure we are paying this year's invoice on time, and we need that additional budget in order to pay that. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So we're not paying more than we should, it's just there's a timing difference on when it's happening, when the last payment happened, and now we need to make sure that we have enough available budget so that we can pay this one on time. Okay. The second one that we have is the City Hall Department, this is for utilities. Now, we did have two utilities that did, two unanticipated utility invoices that have exceeded the original budget line items. Specifically, there was one that was, I have it right here, the sewer utility for the Hartman Run Flow Meter. The outstanding invoice is currently at $42,568.38. Okay, remember, this is a sewer utility bill came in way higher than expected. This is being investigated by Damian and by the City Hall crew. They are trying to identify the issue, whether or not this is a legitimate invoice or not. Remember, all we're doing with this budget revision is if it is a legitimate invoice and we do, or we are obligated to pay it, we want to make sure we have available budget to do so. We are not saying that we are going to pay it at this time, it is still being investigated, but because this will be the last general fund budget revision of our fiscal year, we want to make sure that we're prepared just in case we do have to pay it.
How much higher than normal was it? What was it anticipated to be?
Generally speaking, as a matter of fact, let me see, because I brought a copy of the invoice with me. Hopefully, it's not right there sitting in the chair. It is. Bear with me just a second. I'm going for memory, I want to say it was $6,000, if I remembered correctly.
Wow.
But let me just check.
That is a huge...
Oh, yeah. Yes. Definitely not expected. Okay, so generally speaking, it's $8,900. This particular one came in at $42,568, so you can see why we were concerned, okay? This has not been approved for payment. All we were trying to do is make sure that we do have the available budget. If it is a legitimate invoice, for whatever reason, we can pay this. Okay. The second invoice, very similar circumstances, however, instead of being sewer, it's now water. This is for the 10 Walnut Street property, and this particular invoice came in at $3,631. It's normally about $1,100. Again, this particular invoice, when we received it, because it was three times larger than normal, this has been investigated. We do believe it was because a leaky toilet. We have, we either have requested or are in the process of requesting that MUB actually, not wipe it off, but they give us that one-time reprieve on that. If that happens, that's great, we just don't need to spend it, we don't need to pay it. If they don't, for whatever reason, then yes, we will have to pay it. And again, this isn't approving the actual payment of these, this is just approving the transfer of the budget so that if we have to, we can do that.
Is that the kayak rental facility?
Yes, yes, it is.
It's one toilet?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yep, you let a toilet run for about a month without recognizing, and you're going to get a couple thousand dollar bill. So yes, you should check your toilets. All right. Any questions on that one?
Good to go.
Okay. Excellent. Now, the last that we have, this is for the police department. Now, this particular budget revision, what the intention is, is that the police have requested the transfer of available budget in their operating budget over to their capital budget, which is in the capital escrow. Specifically, this is to outfit the five new vehicles that they purchased almost two months ago. It was $32,000, or $36,200, okay? So out of those five new vehicles, they outfitted them, they needed additional funds, they actually used that in the capital escrow. Now, they need to transfer from their operating surplus funds from their operating budget into the capital budget in order to make sure that they can meet their other expenditures for the remaining fiscal year for that. So all we're doing, we're transferring from the budget, police budget in operating, down to the transfers out to capital escrow, and then over in capital escrow, I have a corresponding budget revision to take it from transfers in to then move it down into the police capital budget, if you will. Okay. Does that make sense? Any questions there? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go far. Move to approve.
Second.
Are we approving?
Just the first one.
F.
F. Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next, we have the approval of a resolution amending 2425 budget revision seven for the Morgantown Capital Escrow Fund.
Bear with me just a second, I've got a lot of papers, and I've got them all out of order. Excellent. Capital Escrow Fund Budget Revision Number Seven. Mayor, City Council, thank you. John Ferguson, finance director, I have the privilege of presenting to you the Capital Escrow Fund Budget Revision Number Seven. In this particular budget revision, we are proposing four separate revisions, the first one being the police department, the outfitting of police vehicles, which we have previously discussed almost 30 seconds ago. Remember, that's where we are transferring from the police operating budget over to the police capital budget, $36,200, and that was for the outfitting of their five new vehicles that were purchased previous, it was two months ago, right? About that. I'm going for memory, don't quote me on that. So all we're doing there is just remember transferring from one budget to the other budget, but because we are transferring between funds, we do have two separate revisions. Any questions on that one? Okay. The next that we have...
The outfitter, you're outfitting the vehicles, are they local or...
This particular invoice was Motorola.
I'm sorry, what?
Motorola, I believe it was their, what, not dash cans.
Oh, I understand.
Cameras and radios, yes.
Electronics.
Yeah, electronics, gotcha. Thank you.
I'm an accountant, I can't tell you the details. I just know that it came from Motorola, and that was the exact dollar amount.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. The next that we have, this is for the Met Theater. This is for the request from the bequest, excuse me, the bequest from the Nancy Elizabeth Love Estate in memory of Edith Catherine Howell Love. Now, this right here, this is to recognize the $75,000 bequest that was received from the Met Theater, and we have a corresponding Met Theater budget revision subsequently. And what we are doing with this is that we are recording the transfer of that bequest, which was deposited and received by the Met Theater Fund, transferring that over to the Capital Escrow Fund to then be utilized within the Met Theater's capital budget. Now, that, again, that was $75,000. The request was from, or the bequest was from the Nancy Elizabeth Love Estate in memory of Edith Catherine Howell Love, and we are extremely grateful for the bequest. Any questions on that? Okay. Next, the remaining two, this is related to the airport. The first of the airport, the municipal airport capital escrow budget revisions, this is to recognize the grant funding from the West Virginia Department of Transportation for the design phase of the airport's street scape project. They brought in a total of, I have it here, $13,445 that was received from the West Virginia Department of Transportation. Those expenditures were then paid out in accordance with that grant. So what we're doing with this is that we are recognizing that grant revenue in this fiscal year, and we are also recognizing the corresponding expenditures of those grants, grant, in this fiscal year of $13,445. Any questions on that? Okay. Last one we have, to me, this is exciting. I know. This right here, this is when we are now funding the municipal airport's marketing campaign. Now, this goes back to an original request that John Vrabel, our airport director made of, Kim Haas, city finance, or city manager at the time, back in October, to help, or to request from the city additional funding to help support the airport's marketing campaign for the new SkyWest Air Service. Now, SkyWest Air Service, they have committed a total of, I believe I put it in here, there was $20,000 in October 2024. The airport needed an additional $60,000 to help support that, which they requested from the city, and the idea at the time was that we were going to utilize our new money market account, the additional interest that was earned over and beyond the normal interest that was already being earned on the checking account. Remember, that was at 1.125%. Our money market account is currently realizing an APY of 3% or 2.96% this month, okay? So we used $50,000 originally from that to help fund the airport's capital repairs for the building terminal, terminal building, excuse me. There was some leakage underneath one of the bay windows. About two months later, we used $18,000 of that additional revenue generated from the money market account towards this campaign, this marketing campaign. Now, I can say with confidence, as of April 30th, 2025, we have earned an additional over and beyond of $22,785. over and beyond of $22,785. This is not only over and beyond how much the money market has generated just in additional interest, but yet is now over and beyond what was originally budgeted overall for the capital escrow account. And I know I'm getting a little ahead of myself. We have also, just in the month of May, which we found out yesterday, we earned an additional $19,000 over and beyond. So if it is appropriate to do so, what we would like to do is use all of the additional interest that has been generated from the utilization of this money market account to fully support, to fully fund this $60,000 request from the municipal airport. They just didn't get it all in one shot. They actually got it over three shots, and it took us six months to do it. But I can say, yes, we were able to do it. We didn't have to take additional funds away from anybody. We didn't have to dip into our contingency, and it was simply by using, utilizing a relatively safe investment tool to generate higher interest. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I know between, because I remember specifically about how much interest income we should... What this does, so what this is, now, this is just for general fund and capital escrow. We have since, since we have converted these two, we have since done seven, okay? Just these two happen to be the larger of the, in the longest that we had. But so far, between the general fund, or over and beyond how much we would have earned in the checking account, the general fund was almost $55,000, and in the capital escrow fund was $116,000. So this will tell you what we actually earned, how much we would have earned in the checking account at 1.125, and how much we actually earned in the money market account. So proof.
Thank you.
It worked. Any questions on that? I know I kind of got away from that one, but with this budget revision, $22,785 bringing us within $19,000 and change of that $60,000 ask. And as of May 30th, we have generated that much and can do that if it's so approved. Just not in this one. Okay? Any questions?
No.
Awesome. Thank you.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes. Passes seven zero. And then you already, next, we have the consideration of approval of a resolution amending the 2425 budget revision number one for the Met Theater Fund. And you can tell us a little more, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Third best part of the night. Now, this budget revision is for our Met Fund, and this is where we are recognizing the requests from the Nancy Elizabeth Love Estate in memory of the Edith Catherine Howell Love. This formally recognizes the $75,000 request that was received on May 6, 2025. This was deposited into the Met Theater Fund, and this budget revision recognizes that additional revenue and also the corresponding expenditure, which is to transfer that into the Met Theater's capital budget over in the capital escrow fund. Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No. Move to a person. Second.
All right. Did you have more you wanted to add?
No, 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 no. I thought Counselor Butcher was asking. No? Okay.
We're good. You did it again. Great job.
Thank you. Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes. Passes seven zero. Next, and we have the consideration of approval of a resolution amending the 2425 budget revision number one for the Hazel Ruby McQueen Park Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. This budget revision is simply to, for lack of better words, to correct a prior year oversight. So what we have found by going back through our records is that there needs to be an authorization of a transfer of $1,066, or, excuse me, $1,066,722.88 from the Hazel Ruby McQueen Park Fund over to the capital escrow fund. Now, going back into July of 2022, the HRM Park actually received a capital grant in the amount of $1,107,000 from the Hazel Ruby McQueen Charitable Trust. Now, the intentions were that that was going to be transferred into the park's capital budget over in the capital fund. Those expenditures were approved and were spent appropriately over in the capital escrow fund. However, the actual cash transfer is, didn't happen between the HRM Park, the operating fund, and the capital escrow fund. So the money was spent over here, the money was deposited over here, and what we found is that the money never got transferred. And all we're simply doing with this is that we are correcting that oversight, but remember, we are on the cash basis of accounting for our budget. We are simply requesting a budget revision so that we can make that transfer, which should have happened two years ago, right, two, three years ago, now. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Your best. Thank you.
Wait. Move to approve?
Second. All right.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Daniel Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes. Passes seven zero. City managers.
Positioning into our new fiscal year, as you've just heard from our Finance Director, we are working on several important administrative tasks, renewal of licenses, rental and vacant structure registrations, fire protection fees, closing out of our current budget, POTA permit renewals. We're working to ensure a smooth transition beyond the administrative work. Summer's in full swing, and so we've got a lot of sun and a lot of rain. They have definitely helped our flower baskets downtown be ahead of schedule. They've also contributed to an uptick in weeds and brush growth. So our urban landscape team and our public works are hard at work, mowing, brush cutting, street sweeping. We just had our street sweeping team out last night, helping address some construction debris that came off of North Street with the heavy rainfall. Construction is also everywhere, as I'm sure you have noticed. There is work being done to improve the city's infrastructure. The orange cones definitely present inconveniences and some delays, but it is definitely vital to enhancing our community. We appreciate everyone's patience in keeping our contractors, our staff and private contractors safe while we're on the road. We are currently preparing for onboarding our new city council members, as well as a new city manager. It's an exciting time here at the city, as new leadership steps in to continue bringing our city forward. And this Friday, we are excited to kick off our first Ruby Summer Concert Series on Friday with thunderstruck. We encourage all of our council members to attend this free event. That is very fun. It might be a little wet this Friday. We'll see. But happy to answer questions on any of these updates or any other items that may have come across your email or phones.
May I say? I'm curious to know, Walnut Street street scape, have we resolved the issues, and are we back on construction or what?
We just received the updated design for the steel beams that are supporting the sidewalk. So we are getting together, I think with our contractor and our designer, hopefully this week, and we'll be getting back started very soon.
Can you be, can you explain to me what the steel beams will do and what needs to be done in order to accomplish it?
Yes. So that block of Walnut Street on both sides of the road, essentially the basements extend underneath of the sidewalk. So when you're in the basement of the building and you look up, you're looking up at essentially the bottom of the sidewalk. Some of those basements are really not used by the properties all along there, but some of them are. Some have storage, some have restrooms. In them, when they were originally designed to replace those beams to, essentially is creating a new ceiling for the room that you're underneath, but then also creating structural capacity to hold the sidewalk up above it. When those were initially designed, it was not apparent that the depth of those steel beams would hang kind of too low in those rooms. So if you're in those rooms, they became a hazard that you could potentially hit your head on or no longer allow doors to work. So what they were able to do was change the type of I-beam to reduce the depth of it, so it essentially raises it. And so they had to go through a new structural analysis on, with a different size beam to ensure how far apart you have to place them, how thick the different plates of metal have to be, et cetera. So that is now done. They had to go back and redesign it. So that's been redesigned and given to the contractor. So we're going to meet back on site and get that project started up again.
Do you have any understanding of when it might be begun again and when it might be finished?
I know initially, we were looking to get back with a contractor this week. They have confirmed that there is enough capacity to, they're working on a couple other jobs in the city, but also have enough staff to cover all jobs that they're working on in the city. So we're not waiting for them to come off of any other current jobs.
Thank you.
Yes.
So then, do we have to order beams?
We will have to order beams, but those shouldn't really take very long to fabricate. They're relatively short beams. It's when you're getting to the ones that are 50-plus feet that are usually slow to get.
I have a question, but it's not affiliated with that. So does anyone else have any other question about that?
At the MMPO meeting...
I'm sorry?
At the MMPO meeting...
Yes.
The Department of Highways, person Ed, was it?
Yes.
Said that all the potholes will be filled by May 31st. How are our potholes?
I think they missed a few.
And if not, I think it's important that we tell people they should let us know where they are, so we can let him know where they are.
If there are potholes, whether it is on a city road or a state road, please let us know where those are. Any kind of wet weather, especially prolonged wet weather, creates new potholes. And so we will be sure to share any and all locations of potholes, and if there are ones, you know, I was talking to Counselor Michael earlier about ones, I think they were on Grove Street, that recently came up. So that has been added to the city's patching list, but definitely the ones on the state maintained roadways, we'd be more than happy to work with them, and whether that be us working in conjunction with them, as we have on the past on Spruce Street, or simply moving those to them to take care of and getting an estimated timeframe. Definitely, please let us know in your words.
How would you like to receive those?
Preferably through our app, 311. It is geo-referenced, so it's much easier to find it. A lot of times, we just say, "It's in front of my house," and then we don't get any app information as far as where that person's house is, or they'll reference, you know, the place where so-and-so likes to take their dog. So geo-referenced is always helpful. Pictures are, can be helpful, but you can email those, but preferably the 311 app. But if you don't have it, you can send those to, say, manager's office, and we'll get them to the right place.
But that's only for city? 311 apps for city only?
You can, you can put it on the...
DOH?
DOH roads as well, and we, we share those with the DOH.
Great.
Yes, those do not go directly to them.
Thank you very much.
I have another unrelated question. It's my understanding that the sleeping ban goes into effect tomorrow. I know that I was getting a barrage of information through press releases and things while I was out of town. Do you have an update on how the city plans to implement that, or who we've contracted with, or anything that maybe the public is interested in hearing about?
Sure. I will give a brief overview, and then if I've missed anything, I'm sure City Attorney will fill me in. But we have been meeting with all of our executive staff and folks within the police department and our special services unit, preparing to implement council's ordinance. So we have worked diligently. We have an administrative policy within our police department that talks about basically how to go through things once you are either called out to a site or run into an area where there is camping occurring on public property. You know, the normal steps, we would engage with folks in just offering assistance, finding out, you know, what is going on in their personal situation, and then seeing how we may be able to help. We have worked with our West Virginia Peers Group. We have been working with them ongoing and then continue to plan on working with them going forward. We have also contracted with Valley Mental Health Office, Scott Avenue, to help with all our alternative sentencing that would kick into place if somebody did get cited under that ordinance, in working to see what, if they wanted to seek treatment, how to get them in connection with that, and whatever resources they may need, whether that's housing, mental health, substance abuse, whatever that may be, how to get them in touch with that. So we've had some of those ongoing meetings internally and have those policies set up, and we will also be posting some additional positions with that for two caseworkers to work with our social worker.
Will those be full-time?
They will be full-time.
City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to share with the rest of council that the mayor, Deputy Mayor, we met with the Municipal League last week, their executive director and two of their staff, to discuss the conference that's going to be coming here in August. So we're anxious to get planning with that, and we had some great ideas. They had great ideas, so we're looking forward to our visitors who will be here in the beginning of August to see our great city. So August 7th through the night, I'll be sending you that information. So I think everyone is registered that is able to, to attend.
I don't need a hotel.
I don't either.
Also want to remind folks about our civil service and the testing that we have coming up. We have all the information on our website. If you go to MorgantownWV.gov and hover over Departments, and you click on Fire Department, there is a list of dates when the second open house is, and that is June 14th. That's Saturday at 9:00 AM at Northside Fire Station. We did have our first open house this past Sunday, and they did have a nice turnout. And it was nice to see the candidates, potential candidates, go through the agility exam and learn from the other firefighters about what they need to do to pass. On the website, there's a video, and it says Morgantown Fire Department Fire Agility Test. So if you have not watched that, I recommend folks take a look at that to see what that entails as a part of becoming a Morgantown firefighter, and that is passing the agility exam. The agility exam is Saturday, June 28th at 9:00 AM at Northside Fire Station. Those folks who pass the agility will move forward to the written exam, and that's about 30 days after. That's on a Wednesday, July 30th at 6:00 PM at the Morgantown Public Safety Training Station. Training Center, formerly known as Defense in Depth. Also on the, their page is a map. A few years ago, Council approved folks who would like to be a firefighter, they could, or a police officer, they could live one hour drive time from the Public Safety Building. And so our GIS analyst, Marvin Davis, was kind enough to put a map on there. So if you click in the search field, you can type your address in, and it'll take you, it'll tell you whether you live within that one hour drive time, which is very, very cool. So again, our firefighters, our Fire Civil Service Commission will be holding exams at the end of the month. Also, the Police Civil Service Commission, they will be holding entry-level police officer exams on Saturday, June 28th, and that's at the Public Safety Building at 9:00 AM. Also, if you go to the website and hover over Departments and Police Department, there's a link to apply, and you can learn all of the things that a police officer might do on their daily, daily, during, during the day, what they do for our great city. Again, their written exam is Saturday, June 28th. The Police Civil Service Commission will be meeting on Thursday to certify names, and so hopefully we will have some new police officers coming our way. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We should be wrapping up the transfers this month of both the 19 city-owned parcels to the Land Reuse Agency, and then the acceptance by the city of the Eastern Roller Mill, both previously approved by Council, so that the Land Reuse Agency can begin marketing and returning those properties to productive use, and that the city, and particularly the Cultural Arts Division, can begin operating that roller mill facility. We also finalized today a license with the Division of Natural Resources to stock fish at the lake, at the Fleegal Reservoir. It will be for non-motorized boat in use only, along with other uses of the aquatic features there, and consistent with trail uses the city's developing. Not, not really my department, but I know those, those trail developments are progressing, and the bridge across, across Cove Creek and White Park is also developing, so some really nice recreational amenities going in over there. That's all I have to report this year.
Thank you.
Anyone want to stop?
Yes, sure.
All right.
I have very little to say. I just want to show or express my appreciation for what the city has done in terms of implementing response camping ban. I think it's very well thought out, and I'm looking forward to its implementation being as humane as possible. Thank you. Other than that, I think I'll.
I just, first, I wanted to say thank you to the City of Morgantown's cleanup day. It turned out very well. And thank you to Caitlin Lewis, Public Works, and the City ambassadors. Despite all the rain, we got a lot of volunteers, so that was really good. So I just want to say thank you for that project. It went really well. And I did want to say, I also feel the same as Bill. I thought that it was the city addressing the issue with our encampment coming up was well thought out, and thank you. And I think that's it.
I also appreciated the cleanup on Saturday. I got to work with some scouts, which was fun. And we worked under the High Street Bridge, between the High Street Bridge and South, I wrote down the wrong name, but South University. There's now the beginning of a trail, it's not a completed trail, but there's a beginning of a trail that runs between Deckers Creek and the rail trail. So it's like a fishing trail that had been there that now has been partially mulched, and it was really fun to see in three hours what a group of individuals could do. And a lot of it was coordinated by Andrew White and Rick Landberger, and these scouts, and the Trumbles, and many other people who I don't happen to know their name, but people just worked really hard together. And so that was just part of the cleanup that happened that day, but it was, it was fun to watch. And then the Suncrest Neighborhood at our lovely Turtle Park, there was a, a day where Council Butcher, Chris Gluck, Matt Cross, myself, and a cast of a few others worked on getting the garden ready for the, it's a, it's a fairy garden, and unfortunately, some of the fairy garden pieces somewhat vandalized. So if people worked on a fairy house, and they would like to be optimistic and work on another fairy house, that would be lovely, because we could use some fairy houses in the fairy garden. But anyway, it's a small, nice community project, and I really appreciate everyone who, who works on it. And I also appreciate all the work on how we're going to implement the camping ban in a way that we are getting people treatment that they might need, housing they might need, whatever is needed to help people to get inside and get safe. So I just appreciate working on implementation, because that's the key. Thank you.
As Jenny mentioned, and Louise mentioned, we participated in the cleanup over the weekend, and since it was raining, my painting project got canceled, and I jumped in with Andrew White and some friends and worked on the trail along Deckers Creek. We made a lot of progress in three hours, and a group of us will be there again this coming Sunday morning, trying to get that trail finished before our invasive species treatment happens next week. You can also look forward to some public art coming to that trail to help encourage its use in the summer and fall months. So very excited to continue that and keep that going. I think the Assistant City Manager mentioned most of the events and things that I would normally mention, but we also will be celebrating First Friday for the Arts in downtown Morgantown on Friday from 6:00 to 9:00. So if the amphitheater is a little too wet for you for an outdoor concert, there's eight or 10 other locations around downtown who will have artists. I know, I was speaking with Steven from the Art Bar this morning, and he's going to have a 12-piece orchestra playing Friday night, I think he said, and I know.
How does he fit that in there?
Oh, I have seen like the Morgantown High Jazz Band in there. It gets a little tight and loud, but they fit it. I think some very cool and interesting things are going to be happening at Andrew White's, kind of kicking off a mural project that will also be happening along the Deckers Creek Trail. So even if it's raining, there will be plenty to do.
Cool.
Will there be T-shirts?
I hear there's going to be T-shirts.
There may be T-shirts.
I'm told there will be T-shirts, and we're trying to fund the end of the mural project with the T-shirts.
Very good. Well, with, with all the rain last weekend, the rail trail system took quite a hit and through the work of a lot of volunteers. A lot of trees were cleared, ditches cleaned, and WVU helped with this landslide at the bottom of the arboretum. So other than just some rutting that still needs to be repaired, it's pretty much opened the full, full distance again. There is a MUB meeting next Tuesday, and I know MUB is preparing some information to bring to the new council that would involve more information about Westover and Star City. So that, that's forthcoming. But in the meantime, if there's any information that, you know, I could bring back from that meeting, this, you know, might be my last meeting. I'll be away in July and won't be at that MUB meeting, but after that point in time, figure that out in terms of if I'm still on, or if a representative from council wants to be on. And that's all I have.
Not too much to report. I guess before our next meeting, there will be, the Pride Block Party will be happening on the 14th from 12 to 5 at the Hazel Ruby McQuain Amphitheater. I think we have 53 vendors this year, and entertainment, food, all that good stuff. The last thing I just want to mention was, if, if nobody's looked at the most recent federal budget, there's about a $32 billion cut to HUD in that federal budget from the President. This cut to HUD would take away all public housing funding. It would, the only funding that's really in there that's left is some funding for tribal designations, which obviously we wouldn't see any of, and then some funding that will go directly to states in a new block grant program. So you can imagine what our state's going to spend that money on. I want people to keep this in mind when we talk about referring people to support, and what we're likely to see in terms of supports going forward, and the kind of organizations that we're going to lose over the next three to four years, because there's not going to be any federal funding for them. Period. That will conclude my report.
Thank you.
I just had one more. I, sorry, Danielle mentioned the Arts Walk, June 14th. I wanted to mention that the Health and Wellness Commission will have Smile Express, who has a spot on High Street. So if you have children or even adults, can come visit the trailer. It'll be a, a trailer. And just wanted to let everybody know that they will be on High Street during the Art Walk.
What can I provide?
Dental, dental stuff, toothpaste, floss, and there will be people there. I believe that will check children's teeth, and they'll have fluoride and stuff.
The Arts Walk's this Friday, right?
First Friday for the Arts is this Friday. The Arts Walk is a different.
I'm sorry.
The Arts Council of Greater Morgantown does First Friday for the Arts. That's on Friday night.
Got you.
On the 14th, I think like generally the same time as the Block Party. Is it like 11 to 3 will be the Arts Walk through downtown, the Main Street, Morgantown.
Brian, is that, that's also our pride?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's another.
There's a bunch of stuff going on.
Yeah, there's so, so much going on that day.
But it's, it's always been helpful on those days, because people don't generally stay at the Block Party for four hours.
One location.
So it's, it just drives foot traffic to everything else. It's been helpful in the past. It's not like, we were always worried about people being drawn away.
Yeah.
Actually makes it easier. You get to see more stuff.
Yeah, you walk from the first ward through the.
Yard sale.
Yard sale, and then down into the wharf, and then up into the downtown.
Hit Smile Express.
And then take naps at the Hotel Morgan, and then.
You stop at Jazzy's at Jack Robinson's Park while shopping in first ward. You have your ice cream, which you're going to need to clean your teeth after.
Yeah, true.
You go to the Block Party. So then you have to stop by the truck and get checked out.
From Raleigh Polley.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole, you just have to have the map right. That's all that matters.
It's called synergy.
That's, that's the word, yes. And then I really didn't have much else to add, except that June 14th is the busiest day between neighborhoods, Pride Block Party, firefighter testing, and the Arts Walk. So that is going to be a busy day. Looking forward to the Concert Series starting this Friday, as well as the 13th and the Tinder, the band I'm looking forward to seeing. And I appreciate all the effort that went into organizing that community cleanup. If there's something I find satisfying, it's using a weed eater, and I got to do that for three hours, and that was like.
He was a beast.
I was in the zone. There was no stopping me.
He was the beast.
I just, it's that immediate satisfaction.
That's how I feel when I do it, yeah.
But just as information, we have our June 14th Yard Sale, where you can sign up to have your yard put on our community map for Google for people to check out, and we'll have Jazzy's with dessert. And the girls, Morgantown High Wrestling Team will be there selling coffee for those that want breakfast. Coffee. And now I look to motion.
I see.
Well, we need to make the motion. I move to, move into executive session to discuss matters protected by returning client privilege under West Virginia Code Section 6-9A-4B12.
And now?
Second.
All right.